This public hearing is called to order. Today's date is July 25, 2017, and the time is 10:05 a.m. This hearing is scheduled to be held from 10 a.m. to 12 p.m. My name is Diana Zalf. I'm an Associate General Counsel with the New York City Department of Health and Mental Hygiene. And with me as well, Assistant Commissioner Frank Cusulo, Assistant Commissioner for Child Care. We have Calvin Chan, Director of Early Childhood Development. And we have Chanelle Fulton, Child Care Director. So first of all, we'd like to thank everyone who's taken the trouble to come down here today to participate in the public hearing process. As you know, the purpose of today's hearing is to elicit comments to assist the Board of Health in its consideration of a proposal to amend Article 47 of the New York City Health Code in regard to child supervision services provided in homeless shelters. A notice of intention to amend this article was published in the New York City Record on June 22, 2017, and a copy of the first page of this notice has been provided to the reporter to include in the record of today's hearing. People wishing to speak today were offered the opportunity to pre-register, and we have several people pre-registered to speak. Anyone who wants to speak who is not yet registered may register at this time at the table outside the room. So I'm going to call on people in the order in which they registered. I'm not sure if everybody's here who registered, but we'll go down the list. If anybody else is here who wants to testify who didn't register, we'll take you afterward. So everybody who wants to speak today will have a chance to speak. And the first person who signed up is Randy Levine. Please introduce yourself and state your affiliation for the record.
Good morning. My name is Randy Levine, and I'm Policy Director of Advocates for Children of New York. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you this morning about childcare and shelters. For more than 40 years, Advocates for Children has worked to ensure a high-quality education for New York students who face barriers to academic success, focusing on students from low-income backgrounds. We're proud to house the New York State Technical and Education Assistance Center for homeless students, which provides information and resources about the educational rights of children experiencing homelessness. In addition, we work to help families, including families who are homeless, connect their children with high-quality early childhood education programs. We appreciate the city's focus on increasing the quality of childcare for children living in shelters. Childcare can have a significant impact on a young child and family experiencing homelessness, providing a safe, supportive environment where a child can prepare for kindergarten while the family works to access needed support, including permanent housing. We support the proposed regulations to require that family shelter-based drop-off child supervision programs adhere to quality standards. We agree strongly that childcare programs in shelters should meet certain requirements regarding staffing ratios, staff qualifications, staff training, and health and safety standards. We're pleased with these proposed changes. We are deeply concerned, however, about the proposal to amend Section 47.05 to place an arbitrary cap on the number of hours per week that a child can participate in a family shelter-based drop-off child supervision program. This proposal would pull the rug out from under children and families living in shelters with no guarantee of an alternative, high-quality childcare option for these children. First, not all children who are homeless are even eligible for subsidized childcare in New York City. The rules are complicated and are laid out in our written testimony. And we're pleased that this year, the Administration for Children Services did broaden the group of children experiencing homelessness who are eligible for subsidized childcare. But there are some children who are homeless who continue to be left out and ineligible for subsidized childcare. We would like to see the city make all children who are homeless eligible for childcare. In the meantime, though, the city should not remove a childcare option from these children or limit the number of hours for which it's available. Second, even families who are eligible for subsidized childcare are often unable to access childcare seats. In fact, due to lack of funding, only around 14% of income-eligible infants and toddlers in New York City can access subsidized childcare. Advocates for Children has had cases in which our attorneys and advocates have engaged in extensive searches but have been unable to help families find early childhood education programs for their young children because there are simply no available seats in a particular neighborhood. While this shortage impacts all low-income families, it is often even more difficult for families who are homeless, who may be placed in a shelter far away from their original neighborhood in the middle of the year when childcare programs are more likely to be called. Third, even families who can find an available seat in an early childhood education program may need childcare outside of the hours covered by the program. For example, we're delighted that Pre-K for All provides a high-quality early childhood education program for every four-year-old child in the city, but it only covers six hours and 20 minutes per day during weekdays and only for the 10-month school year. Families may need additional childcare outside of these times in order to work, look for housing, or attend appointments. And finally, even if a family is ultimately successful in finding an early childhood education program that meets the family's needs, there's likely to be a gap between the time the family enters the shelter and the time the child can start participating in an early childhood education program. Families and childcare liaisons will need time to complete childcare applications, await eligibility determinations, and find available seats. During this time, families may have many additional responsibilities and face challenges. For example, while elementary school students living in shelter are eligible for yellow bus service, it often takes several weeks for the Department of Education to set up the bus route. So a parent may need 10 hours of care just to leave their younger child somewhere while they transport their older student back and forth from school, not to mention the appointments that the parent must attend while the children are at school. We agree that children's staff and city agencies should help families find and enroll their children in the highest-quality early childhood education programs whenever possible. However, we fear that placing an arbitrary cap on the number of hours per week that families can use drop-off childcare without a guarantee of an alternative, high-quality childcare program will result in children who are homeless spending the day being dragged to various stressful housing and social services appointments, or participating in childcare settings that are entirely unregulated instead of participating in childcare programs that adhere to the new standards being proposed. We urge you to modify the proposed regulations to eliminate the limit on the number of hours a child can participate in drop-off childcare supervision programs by deleting Section Finally, there's more about this in our written testimony, but we wanted to highlight one other change that we would like you to consider. We appreciate that under the proposed regulations, the responsibility of the shelter childcare liaison includes referring families to childcare programs and helping them apply and referring them to the early intervention program. We urge you to add preschool special education programs and services to the categories of programs with which the shelter childcare liaison should assist. Early intervention serves children from birth through three. Preschool special education serves children from ages three to five. Unlike early intervention where there's a service coordinator, there's no service coordinator for preschool special education. We've had a number of cases where a child was in the process of being evaluated for preschool special education services and then became homeless and entered a shelter, and the process stopped, or where a child was participating in a preschool special education program and then became homeless, was transferred to a shelter far away, and was no longer able to attend the program because nobody helped to either arrange transportation or find a closer program. We do not want preschoolers to have the legal right to receive special education classes and services, to miss out merely because nobody has assisted the family in reinstating special education services, or for that to be the reason why a child is in the drop-off childcare program instead of in a special education program. And so we have some language here that we're requesting that you use to amend the proposed regulations so that the childcare shelter liaison's responsibilities include not only referring children to early intervention and childcare, but also to preschool special education programs and services when appropriate. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much for the comment. Okay, next on our list, Stephanie Gendel. Hi, please state your name and affiliation for the record.
Good morning. My name is Stephanie Gendel. I'm the Associate Executive Director for Policy and Advocacy at Citizens Committee for Children of New York, which is a 70-year-old, multi-issue, independent child advocacy organization. I just first wanted to thank you all for providing us with the opportunity for public comments today regarding the provision of childcare and childcare supervision services within the family homeless shelters. We also want to thank the Comptroller and his office for investigating the provision of childcare in family shelters and for his report that had some concerning findings back in October of last year. The report documented serious health and safety risks in some of the onsite drop-off programs. In addition, the report explained and brought to our attention that many of the programs at family shelters are not regulated by the Department of Health. We appreciate that the administration took the report seriously, and we agree with the intent of the proposed regulations to ensure all young children who are homeless are in safe, quality, appropriately-staffed childcare programs, and that as many of these vulnerable children as possible are in full-time, long-term programs as opposed to drop-off care. While we support the city regulating these programs, we are very concerned about the proposal to limit the hours of care to 10 hours per week. We believe that we must preserve onsite drop-off childcare programs at Tier 2 shelters and ensure that they provide homeless families with quality, safe options that is flexible enough to meet the needs of these families in the shelter system who are going through a crisis in their life. My testimony provides some background, which I won't go through. Much of it explains the early childhood system, which you all are very familiar with, but I did want to mention briefly just the magnitude of the issue we're talking about is that last week, there were over 22,000 children in the shelter system with their parents. They comprise nearly 70% of the shelter system. We're talking about a system of very young children. About half of those children are under six, and about 1,100 babies are born into the shelter system each year. Only half of those families are in Tier 2 shelters that were actually created to provide care to homeless families. The other half are in cluster sites and hotels. Many of these families are placed far from their communities, jobs, as well as where they may have been receiving childcare for their family. Thus, families with children enrolled in childcare programs prior to entering the shelter system are often not placed near where their original childcare program was, disrupting that continuity of care. And the other thing I wanted to just mention in the background, and then I'll go to our recommendations, is that the overwhelming majority of Tier 2 shelters, which only house half of the families, do not operate drop-off programs. There's only, according to the Comptroller's report, 99 -- only, sorry, 43 programs that operate such programs. Okay, turning to the proposed regulations. The proposal to establish safety training and staffing ratios for these onsite drop-off childcare programs at family shelters, we agree that these programs need to be safe and properly staffed, and we support the proposed amendments in this regard. That said, we urge DOHMH to work closely with the current shelter providers operating these facilities to assess any deficiency with regard to the seriousness or hazardous of the violation and to create a plan to address the concern. In some instances, the program may need to be closed during the mitigation, but in other instances, the program might still be safe and a timeline to address the concern be created. In addition, there may be some programs that will not be able to come into compliance with the Health Code proposal, and we urge DOHMH to assess each of these instances individually and potentially grandfather in some of the programs if it won't create a safety risk to the children. Finally, we urge the city to provide the shelter providers with the resources they will need to come into compliance with the new rules. With regard to the 10 hours per week proposal, we strongly urge the Board of Health to reject this proposal limiting the weekly numbers of hours of care. Families in shelter are in crisis. This type of time limit will hurt families more than help them for the following reasons. First, as has been discussed, the childcare system does not have enough capacity to serve every homeless child in the communities where the shelters are located. We know from research and data using ACS's data that the system currently only has the capacity to serve 14% of income-eligible children that are infants and toddlers, and that includes the children in the voucher system, not just early learn. In the early learn system, there are very few slots for infants and toddlers, and there's a significant number of children in that age range in the shelter system. We can't resolve this capacity issue by giving homeless families vouchers. Families new to a community should not be trying to find providers, especially informal providers, in a new community they're unfamiliar with. In addition, as mentioned earlier, children and families enter shelter throughout the year. Childcare programs try to fill up their seats in the beginning of the year and may not have capacity midway through the year. In addition, as mentioned before, homeless children are not categorically eligible for childcare, and so there are some children in the shelter system who are homeless who will not be eligible for care. For example, children whose parents are on public assistance but are excused from the work requirement. Pre-kindergarten programs for four-year-olds and soon three-year-olds do not provide full-work daycare or summer care. Even parents who avail themselves of pre-kindergarten, which we urge and support every four-year-old to be enrolled, might need more than 10 hours of care. For example, if a family enters shelter in July, the four-year-old child could be enrolled in Pre-K starting in September, and they would benefit from having a drop-off program in July and August. Homeless families in crisis need help and flexibility, particularly when they first enter the shelter system. As I mentioned, many of these families are placed far from communities they know, their families, workplaces, service providers, and support networks. The city's systems serving these families need to do what they can to alleviate stress and trauma and not create additional stress and trauma. Establishing a rigid and arbitrary rule of 10 hours per week does not accomplish the goal of meeting the needs of homeless families. Drop-off childcare programs should be available when families need them. When families first enter shelter, they have a lot of appointments, including bringing their children to school, getting to work, getting to public assistance appointments. In addition, families hopefully planning to leave the shelter system with a linked rental assistance voucher might need more than 10 hours per week looking for apartments. It would be much easier to leave their toddlers in a drop-off program rather than bring them throughout the city on an apartment search. In addition, while it is preferable for children to be enrolled in full-time, long-term childcare where there's a curriculum, there are a number of reasons why a child may not be enrolled and a family would need more than 10 hours per week. For example, when families first enter shelter, there is a period of adjustment for everyone. They're getting used to the new shelter, new subway stops, new neighbors. The parent may feel uncomfortable leaving the child in a program in a community right away. The shelter system and early childhood system should be providing support and assistance to these families. In addition, it's also important to remember that enrollment in childcare is not automatic and takes time. The family needs to be found eligible. The parent needs to find a program in vacancy. Families entering shelter can't have a lot of appointments, so this takes even more time. Lastly, I just wanted to turn to the proposal related to requiring the family shelter-based drop-off child supervision programs. Staff have a childcare liaison responsible for referrals to childcare programs, helping families apply and referring families to early intervention. We strongly support this idea. We understand you're the Department of Health, so you're coming in through Article 47 of the Health Code. We would actually suggest that the city take a step back and ensure that all Tier 2 shelters, cluster sites, and hotels have a staff person who can provide this role of referring families to childcare, helping them apply, referring them to early intervention, and also to preschool special education. The programs that we're talking about today are just the drop-off programs. The majority of families are not in shelters that have access to a drop-off program, and so we want to make sure that actually all families benefit from having staff members who can help them get into early childhood education. That said, we do support that proposal because we're happy to have some children have that benefit. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, our next speaker is Zachary Steinberg. Please introduce yourself and state your affiliation.
Good morning. My name is Zachary Steinberg. I'm the Deputy Policy Director in the Office of the New York City Comptroller. I'm joined by my colleague Jessica Silver, who is our Chief of Strategic Operations for the First Deputy Comptroller.
I haven't turned to you.
Sorry. Start over.
Can you just state what Jessica did?
Jessica Silver is the Chief of Strategic Operations for the First Deputy Comptroller. And I'll summarize our more complete written statement, and thank you very much. With over 58,000 individuals, including more than 22,000 children living in homeless shelters each night, DOHMH's attention to this critical issue is timely. In brief, the Comptroller's Office believes that the proposed amendment will help to bring positive health and safety improvements to our shelter system for families with children. However, in limiting the amount of time a child could attend a drop-off center, the proposal will also limit access to childcare services for certain families, creating barriers for parents in need. Going forward, city agencies, including DOHMH, must work collaboratively to fix gaps in the existing system so that all homeless families have meaningful access to childcare services. In 2016, the Office of the Comptroller conducted an investigation into childcare services at city shelters for families with children that found significant gaps in the quality and provision of childcare throughout the system. While shelter providers are generally required to provide access to childcare services under accommodation of state law and contracts with the city, the investigation found that of the 167 family shelters at that time, eight operated a permitted childcare program onsite, 43 operated an unpermitted childcare program onsite, 17 had a linkage agreement with an offsite childcare provider, and 99 provided no childcare options at all, which included 29 of the 93 shelters classified as either a certified Tier 2 or a Tier 2 logo-like. Consequently, many homeless families lack immediate access to reliable childcare. Furthermore, the investigation found that unpermitted onsite childcare services pose potential health and safety risks to children. Although the city has made strides in addressing these conditions, at the time of our investigation, we found 82% of employees working directly with children had not been screened for criminal convictions and records of child abuse, 49% did not have valid training in child abuse identification and reporting, and 97% were not trained in sudden infant death syndrome prevention. In addition, inspectors found that physical spaces used for unpermitted onsite childcare lack basic fire safety measures, such as not having a fire extinguisher in the childcare room or having locked emergency exits. Consequently, the Comptroller's Office supports your efforts and believes that many provisions included in the proposal represent significant improvements to the status quo. However, the proposed amendment limiting access to onsite childcare supervision programs to 10 hours per child per week may unintentionally harm homeless families with children, especially if there is not a coordinated effort with other city agencies to address the existing lack of access to childcare services that many homeless families face. If such a restriction were imposed, a family living in shelter with a drop-off childcare program would likely be forced to seek childcare outside the shelter. However, that access may be quite limited. As has been previously mentioned here, it appears that ACS only has the capacity to serve about 40% of income-eligible children under three years of age in the early childhood system, meaning that offsite subsidized care is unlikely to be ready and available for all homeless families. As a result, in the absence of a broader access to these offsite programs, the 10-hour limit can ultimately make it harder for homeless families to find reliable childcare or supervision services. The Comptroller's Office believes that rather than imposing a timing constraint that would limit access to a family shelter-based drop-off center, DOHMH should work collaboratively with other city agencies, including DSS, DHS, ACS, DOE, and others, to expand the access to high-quality childcare programs by addressing the existing gaps in the network of providers that currently plague the system. As part of that effort, the city should consider requiring that all homeless shelter providers for families with children, not just those obtaining a permit for a drop-off service, have a shelter childcare liaison as defined in this proposal. Referring families to and helping them apply for childcare programs is a critical service that families in all DHS shelters would benefit from. While shelters without onsite childcare may be outside the scope of this particular regulation, it is significant need that warrants the city's attention. Finally, in implementing this new regulatory regime, DOHMH should provide adequate guidance and support to shelter operators to ensure that these new requirements are implemented with limited disruptions to children with families currently utilizing this service. Thank you for considering these views, and we're happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very, very much. Okay, our next speaker is Kathryn Chapani. Hi, please introduce yourself and state your affiliation for the record.
My name is Kathryn Chapani, and I am the Executive Director of Homeless Services United. I want to thank you for the chance to speak this morning. And I also want to say that Homeless Services United is a membership coalition of about 50 providers of homeless services throughout the city of New York. And when the Board first heard this proposal being introduced, you all had asked the question, "Has anyone asked providers about the impact of these rules?" And the answer was no. So I'm here because I did. I asked the providers how these proposed changes would affect our operations, and so the testimony is really informed by people that are currently providing services to homeless families in New York City. So I just wanted to say that as my premise and then go through the comments. Like my colleagues here today, HSU strongly objects to the limit on the number of care hours for homeless families that they may use the drop-in childcare supervision programs. The justification given for proposing a limit on the type of care stems from the assertion that programs are not designed to provide for the early education or full-time, long-term care of children. And this might be true of many drop-in child supervision programs, but certainly not all. It does not justify depriving homeless parents of a valuable, flexible care option that their children might require at times for more than 10 hours a week. HSU agrees that children benefit from structured learning environments designed to promote healthy child development and education, and HSU member agencies often provide such licensed care onsite, and those that don't work diligently with families providing other programs to link children to appropriate care as already required by both the letter and spirit of existing regulations. Drop-off child supervision programs are not designed or intended to replace such structured programs that are designed to offer emergency or backup childcare, respite care, babysitting services, and/or an interim care option for families seeking placement in options that are more structured. To understand why unrestricted access to such a care option is necessary, one must understand how families use the service currently and what is unique about shelter life that makes flexibility so essential for family well-being. And the written comments are extensive, but for the sake of time, I'm just going to echo some of my colleagues' comments. Families newly admitted to shelter do rely on the supervision programs while working to secure their shelter placement in the first place, and then once eligible for shelter, for more structured options. And so what I think gets missed is that when a person is applying for shelter, they're placed in a conditional 10-day placement in a family shelter somewhere in the city of New York while determining whether or not they're going to be allowed to stay. So anybody in that 10-day window is going to need the drop-off program so that they can go to all of the eligibility appointments related to their conditional shelter stay. It's very traumatic to have children shuttling back and forth to the PATH Center, and when DHS did their 90-day review of homeless services, there was actually a recommendation that they no longer require children to go back to the intake center because of the trauma, and now they're saying that you're going to limit the care hours. So it's sort of putting families in the carriage 22. So I just wanted to flag that for the Board. I also wanted to flag the use of service as an enhancement to structured licensed daycare options. A lot of parents that use the drop-off service also are having their children enrolled in full-time daycare programs. And so folks use this service as a backup. They use it as respite, and they've had a stressful day. They need a break. When they drop their kids off from school, they get them off the bus, and the parent has a few minutes to speak with a counselor. A lot of shelters offer programming in the evenings because many families in shelter work or go to school or, you know, web assignments or what have you, so that the drop-off service is essential so that a parent can go to, say, a domestic violence support group in the evening. And limiting the care hours would force families to make decisions about what kinds of services they would actually avail themselves to because they wouldn't want to go over a cap. So those kinds of tensions need to be addressed, which is why the limiting care hour doesn't make sense. My colleagues have already spoken about the lack of community care options. Our members tell us that this is particularly acute for infants. Infant care slots are really difficult to find, and so the drop-off service fills an important gap. As also has been mentioned by my colleagues, out of the summer months when children are not in school, also are at the time of year that children overwhelmingly rely on the drop-in childcare programs. So for those reasons and others that are in the written testimony, we object to the time limit. We also want to make a quick comment about the proposed changes to the staffing requirements for the drop-off childcare supervision programs. for the drop-off childcare supervision programs. With respect to the requirement that a bachelor's degree would be required, we request that the board consider some flexibility in this area so that if a person had relevant experience or other qualifications, that that requirement could be waived as is done with other civil service titles. There's many people that have been working in the existing shelter programs for, in some cases, 20 years, that have extensive experience that our families really trust with our kids that would be disqualified from continuing employment if that VA requirement were imposed. And then finally, a lot of folks have said in the course of the discussion that, you know, if you're so opposed to the limit on the care hours, why wouldn't someone just get licensed and then they could simply overcome these impediments? And my providers tell me that the existing unlicensed programs would not be able to come into compliance with the licensing requirements, mostly due to physical plant space. And so, for example, if you decided to become a licensed daycare provider to get rid of all of these challenges, you would have to build out a second bathroom. There's simply no space in the existing shelter facilities to do things like that, although we certainly agree with all of the fire safety and other sort of pieces like that. So in conclusion, while our members have absolutely no objection to oversight, we think that's really important and thank you for the role that you play in that. We think that if the goal is to put more children into more structured learning environments, the way to get there isn't necessarily by imposing this other layer of regulation which would in fact rob people of some flexibility. I think the way to get there is to do as many of my colleagues have suggested, making sure that homeless families are categorically eligible for the existing community-based childcare programs that are out there. And I would actually recommend going a step further and give them priority for placement to cope with those mid-school replacements and so on. But until we get there, HSU just doesn't think that this proposal is written makes sense. So, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Okay, our next speaker is Ted Houghton. Please come up, introduce yourself, and state your affiliation.
Good morning. My name is Ted Houghton. I'm the president of Gateway Housing, which is a new nonprofit that is assisting nonprofit service providers and government to redevelop and improve many of the existing homeless shelters in New York City as well as build new, better ones. We want to create environments for homeless families and individuals that are going to really contribute to improving on their strengths and to reduce trauma. And one of the things that we're looking at a lot is childhood education and getting more homeless children into structured childhood education programs and improving the onsite childcare options that are available to homeless families. I think that this proposed amendment is well-intentioned and we support many of the goals of it, but I agree with my colleagues that some of these, some tweaks could be made. I have written testimony but, and I swore I was going to read it, but now I'm just going to tell you, so I urge you to read this and my colleagues' testimony, which is far more detailed than mine.
We certainly will.
Okay, thank you. In any case, Gateway is also against the 10-hour limit. We don't believe there should be any limit to the number of hours that homeless children can avail themselves of onsite childcare, not because we think they should stay with those programs. We believe that getting into childhood early learn and other kinds of structured programs at start are great things, but homelessness is an incredibly disruptive event and there's all sorts of confusion and mayhem and you need a lot of flexibility. The programs that work the best are the ones that do whatever it takes to help families become stable and to get back into permanent housing. And they need the kind of flexibility that having that resource of onsite childcare can give those homeless families because, like my colleagues have said, homeless families have to go on appointment after appointment after appointment and often they have to drag their children to those appointments and we really want to minimize that trauma. They have to go and see lots of different apartments. A lot of times the children are not supposed to go on those visits. Having early childhood education would be great, but the fact is, is drop-off childcare is equally important. We also have a concern about the Article 47's very precise education level requirements for staff. I have found that in homeless services especially, personal life experience and work experience is really important and can be really effective at working with homeless families and people that have been going through, going through a really traumatic episode here. Being able to talk to people who have experienced something like that as well can be a very effective way to reach them and to help them. If we allow for work experience to substitute for education, as we often do in civil service tests and that sort of thing, I think that will strengthen the program and will be able to allow providers that are currently providing this care to retain really valuable staff that has experience. It is true, we spend a lot of time working on redeveloping existing shelters. It's a very big project and these shelters need reinvestment and improvements, physical improvements, but it is very difficult for many of these childcare spaces to do the kind of renovations that will allow them to conform exactly to the Department of Health's standards. We are working in old buildings and we're not talking about fire safety and many of the other health and safety concerns that the legislation addresses or the amendment addresses. We're talking about not having enough sinks or the bathroom for the staff is down the hall and around the corner. It's not possible to build in that extra bathroom to get into compliance with the new regs and so we need flexibility on that. Otherwise, many of the programs that we do have, and we only have 43 onsite childcare programs, many of those will have to close and then fewer homeless children will get onsite childcare or any childcare at all and that's not the aim of this amendment, I'm sure. Even if these childcare programs were able to continue operating under the new DOHMH license, there's a much bigger capacity problem in the system at large. And I think giving homeless children priority to get into community-based programs would be a huge step forward because it is so difficult for our families to get in, for our staff in the shelters, to get homeless families into community-based programs because there's just not enough slots. They're coming in at the middle of the year. They really need as much help getting access to the larger program as they can. I just want to conclude with, this really reminds me a little of something that happened 15 years ago with adult homes. The New York Times ran a big series on all sorts of abuses of adult homes, which were regulated at the time by the Office of Temporary Disability Assistance, so it's called DSS back then. They took oversight from OTDA and put it with the New York State Department of Health. 15 years later, the worst criminal abuses are not happening in adult homes, but we still have all sorts of deficiencies in that system. And that's because the system, while it might be better regulated, is still starved for resources. And to make this regulatory reform successful here, we need more resources. We must fund shelter providers to make repairs and maintain a safe and sanitary physical environment for the onsite childcare. We must provide the funding to train staff properly and to pay them adequate wages so we can keep good, competent employees. And we must adequately fund community-based early childhood education programs so they have the ability to accept all children that need it. If we don't provide these additional resources, it's going to be very difficult to make this regulatory reform succeed. So thank you for hearing the testimony and good luck.
Thank you very much. Okay, so that's everybody who registered to speak. Is there anybody else here who would like to speak? All right, there being nobody else, the time is now 10:45 a.m. We're going to adjourn the hearing. We'll reconvene at 11:55 and see if anybody else has arrived, which I think is unlikely. Record, the time is now 11:57 a.m. Nobody else having appeared to testify, this hearing is now closed.